June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to call the work session of the McMinnville City Council to order. Tonight, we're going to be getting our PROS Plan update. Before I turn it over to Director Muir, I just want to state for the record that I have received another letter requesting a trampoline park, and I will hand that off to you. Oh, man.
They had them in the Netherlands. They had trampolines in the Netherlands.
Well, the kids of McMinnville really want one here, I'll tell you. At least the Dunaway kids. A lot of those Dunaway kids have written about the trampoline park. So, yeah, natural bouncers.
You ready for me?
Ready.
All right, thank you. As the mayor mentioned, this is a work session on the Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan update, and on your screen, John Phinis and Ellie Schaefer from MIG just showed up. They're going to be helping with the meeting tonight. You know, we always go through a conversation about are they going to be here in person, or are they going to be doing it online? And I wanted to let you know, we are intentional about saving the resources under this contract to make sure we have John here in person when we have larger groups or public. So with that, I think John's going to give you an overview of where we've been, some things might sound a little familiar, and then kick us off and talk about next steps under the PROS Plan. So I will turn it over to you, John.
Thank you, Susan. Just a quick sound check. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Coming in, okay, great, excellent. Well, thank you for the introduction, Susan, and council members and members of the public. My name is John Phinis. I'm a planner and principal with MIG. We're the consulting firm helping city of McMinnville with the Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan project. So tonight, we've got, I know we've got an hour for this work session, so we're going to do as much as we can. We appreciate the time with all of you tonight. So some goals for our presentation. We're going to bring it, provide an update on what we've been doing since we last met, so talk a little bit about the planning process, the schedule. Some of this will be familiar to some of you that have been in these meetings, so we'll touch on some highlights. But tonight, we want to focus on community needs, key themes from community outreach, and the vision for the parks and recreation system. And so you all have a short handout. We don't have a lot of information to review tonight, but we did want to spend some time talking about what the values and some potential goals are for the park system for the future. And then we'll wrap things up with next steps and what to expect for the next meeting. So as a refresher, why are we talking about this? What's the purpose of the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, the PROS Plan? There are a number of different reasons. All of them are extremely valuable. Updating the system's inventory, understanding existing conditions. Things are constantly changing, just as the community of McMinnville is growing and evolving, so is the park system. So this is a chance to get a handle on what's out there, what condition is it in, and describing those conditions. Documenting needs and priorities, obviously, we're talking about that tonight. This is a plan built on community needs and community values. And so we're here to help guide that process, but the idea is that this is a community-based plan to identify that vision for the future. And then to get to some specifics, so next meeting we'll have with you all, we'll have more specifics on recommendations, projects, all the specifics that go into a parks plan. But really, we're taking this one step at a time. So the last couple of meetings, we're really getting a handle on opportunities, challenges, getting an understanding of the big picture, and then launching community outreach, so doing a lot of the surveying, the meetings, which I'll talk about here in a second. I'll talk more about next steps as we wrap the work session up tonight, but just something to keep in mind tonight is step two in a four-step process. So we're putting all of these building blocks together to eventually come up with this comprehensive plan for parks and recreation. So tonight is really just to understand what are, we're hearing from the community, what are those key needs? And that's going to help inform what we do next. So what are those specific recommendations, projects, programs, policies? What will those start to look like? So there's a lot to talk about. McMinnville has a very robust park and recreation system, and when we think about parks and recreation, we're thinking about all of these things you see on the screen, and everything in between. So develop parks, play areas, sports fields, sports courts, undeveloped areas, natural areas, programs. McMinnville has some incredible programs, and that includes programs for kids, adults, older adults, events, really great community events, and then trails, connectivity, indoor spaces, outdoor spaces, everything that you can think of. So there's a lot at stake, a lot that we're planning for, and I think that's important to set the context for the conversation. So I know at the joint meeting back in March with the school district and city council, there was a question around, you know, what are these park types? If we're talking specifically around park types. So I just wanted to highlight a little bit more on how we classify park types. And that's important because ultimately, we have to design these parks, we have to maintain these parks, we have to program all of these spaces, and they all function differently, and that's intentional. So I have up here the five key park types that we're talking about, and I have a map on the next slide to highlight those. But all these parks and sites are different, as I mentioned, for a specific reason. So everything from mini parks and play lots, so this is an image of Kingwood Park in South McMinnville, really serving the immediate neighborhood, and primarily for families, small kids, a place to take a break at lunch, those types of things, compared to a neighborhood park. And this is really the building block of most park systems. These are larger areas, they oftentimes have multiple facilities, play areas, picnic areas, trails, but really, this is the amenity that is really critical to the building block of the neighborhood, you know, having a place to walk to, to get out and get some exercise and have fun. And then community parks, the larger of the developed parks, and really, Discovery Meadows, I think, is a great example of an excellent community park. You've got amenities there that attract people from all over the city, if not throughout the surrounding area as well. So specialized things like skate parks, spray grounds, play areas, big destination areas, and other specialized facilities. So really thinking about attracting more than just the immediate neighborhood. Then linear parks, thinking about trail corridors, so the land that is contained around that trail, such as the West Side Trail. So there's a lot that can happen here. And this example, you know, really, it's pretty much just the paved trail and the mowed grass that's alongside it, but there are opportunities for seating, art, all sorts of different ideas that can take place there. And then to round out all these different park types is more the natural area. So both open space that's really dedicated for natural habitat, environmental protection and environmental benefits, or undeveloped land. So maybe there is a potential opportunity to change that site into a different type of park into the future. So looking at the system map, this is putting it all together. So you've seen this before, but really starting to think about, you know, where do these sites fit within the entire city? So we've got parks in almost every corner, we've got really the most popular community parks, kind of at the core of McMinnville, near Downtown City Park, Joe Dancer Park, Discovery Meadows a little bit further out. But all told, this starts to add up, and this starts to get into the conversation around, well, how much do we have? How are we maintaining this? How much are the improvements going to cost down the road in this plan? So developed parks, about two hundred and thirty acres, and that comes out to about six point six acres per thousand residents, that's the current population. And then the total park system, so when you add developed with undeveloped open space, all the different sites, it's a much larger system, about three hundred and five acres, and that increases the level of service to eight point eight acres per thousand residents. So a big system, and we'll talk more about the level of service. I know this also came up in past meetings, how we define that, and some goals to set for the plan. So going back into the last couple of meetings that we've had together, so back in, last summer, when we first met kicking the plan off, and then more recently, back in March with the school district, I just thought it was important to remember what was talked about back then, and this isn't everything, of course, but just some highlights. So a couple of questions that came up, as I mentioned, level of service, you know, how do we define that? What does that mean for the parks plan? How do we consider the needs of different age groups? And this translates to an opportunity you can see across the row there. So thinking about, you know, younger kids, older kids, young adults, older adults, the entire demographic. Addressing quality of parks and facility needs, and then we mentioned revenue potential. So obviously, parks can provide more than just places to play and have fun. They can provide the city with revenue, so there's definitely a potential for that. So that gets into opportunities. I'll talk in a minute about what we heard from the community, really focusing on making the most of the existing park system. So reimagining some older parks, you know, what can we do to enliven some of these sites? Embracing different cultures, that's something that council talked about earlier. So really, creating spaces that feel open, they feel like a sense of community, that you belong there, that you're able to have fun, bring your family, and enjoy your time out. Connectivity was mentioned, as well as conservation and sustainability. So these are really important topics. These are everything from local needs to global issues, such as conservation, sustainability, but all things that are important to council, obviously, and also to this plan. So thinking more about what have we heard from the community? We know what is important to council, but I want to talk a little bit more about what we've heard of the community. And as I mentioned, some of this might be a little bit of a refresher. In March, the survey was still up and running, so since that time, we've closed the survey, we've completed a lot of the initial outreach, so we've got a lot more up-to-date information to share. But first and foremost, really incredible response rate from the survey. Again, this was an open access survey, so anybody and everybody that wanted to take it could. This was not a statistically significant survey, but with the great turnout, there's some really good information that we can use. And then when we apply that to other opportunities that we had, community meetings, some pop-ups, meetings with the school district, the county, obviously, council planning commission, the DEIC, the school district, we start to see some key themes. So we start to see some big picture, what are we hearing, and what does that start to tell us? It's also important, thinking about that great turnout with the survey, that the staff, Susan and her team, really did a great job of hitting the pavement, making sure almost every square inch of the city responded to the survey, or at least knew that the city was taking on this parks plan update. So I thought this graphic was great. This is basically, all those little dots represent someone that submitted a survey online, so you can see really good coverage throughout the entire city. So we thought that was important to highlight. So first off, just some benefits to the parks and recreation system. And this is a great way to open up a lot of the questions that we ask people out there in McMinnville, just to start thinking, what do parks mean to you? Everybody's got an opinion, but it's great to start from scratch. What do parks mean to you? Before we start talking about what you need from the city and what you want parks to be. So parks are important, but they're important for a lot of reasons. And so what we heard from the community, and a lot of this came from the survey as well, is really just a place to gather, being part of something, being part of the community, enjoying access to the outdoors. There's some great green spaces and natural areas in McMinnville, and contributing to physical health. A lot of people we heard from really enjoy getting out there and exercising, things like walking, running, riding a bike, things that a lot of people do on a daily basis. And then parks are part of daily life. So what we heard from the survey in particular was that a lot of folks are using Parks and Recreation, the system, on a regular basis. So off, right off the bat, we know that there are multi-benefits to the Parks and Recreation System, and that's important to start considering needs. So we asked some other questions, and what I want to show in the next few slides is, again, those key themes. So if you put all the different information together, survey results, meeting outcomes, what does that start to tell us? The first is, as I mentioned, gathering is important, play is very important, there are a lot of families, a lot of kids, and then trail connectivity. So this graphic shows the final results of the online survey. You can see the top three most popular responses when we asked, what do you like most in parks? Trails for walking and biking, places to sit, picnic, and gather, and then playgrounds and play spaces for childrens and youth. So top responses, top things people like to do in parks, but you can see there are lots of others, and it goes all the way down the list. So another key need, and I highlighted this earlier on in the presentation, welcoming parks for people of all ages, abilities, incomes, and cultures. And I know the council, council has brought this up as an important point for the plan and the system, and this is something that came up with conversations with the community. So just some images here showing some examples from around the country of some inspiration when thinking about this particular need. So spaces in parks that allow you to exercise. So this image at left is a trail in Los Angeles, and it has really low impact, easy to access, easy to use, very intuitive exercise equipment. And I know a lot of us are familiar with, you know, the exercise equipment from the nineteen eighties, a lot of the wood manufactured exercise equipment, but things have come a long way, and you can see the example here, these are very popular in a lot of park systems. Another example is interactive and free play areas. This is an example in Yanaguana Gardens in San Antonio, Texas. But starting to think more about what else can you have if it's not an off-the-shelf play structure? Can you have interactive art, like this example, this big mosaic cat that these kids are having a great time climbing over? Another key need that we heard, connecting to nature and other recreational opportunities. So trails are part of that, but so are natural areas in parks, and there are a number of ways that that can take place. There's some great examples in McMinnville, but just again, some examples from around the country. This one, I believe, Ellie, this one's in Golden, Colorado, but rethinking an underused space along the river, in this case, under a bridge. So again, interacting with water, being in nature, you can see there's a slide that connects up above to the park, and there's even opportunity for some art. One of the top concerns that we heard a lot about and key needs for this plan that many of you are well aware of is concerns and perceptions around safety. We heard a lot of perceptions around what people think of parks and what would get them to use parks if things were different, and safety was paramount. That was by far a key topic. But when we really break that down, it can mean many different things to many different people. And this does relate back to creating more of a welcoming atmosphere in a park. If you don't see a lot of people in a park, is that really going to make you feel like it's a place you want to be or feel safe in? For a lot of people, the answer is no. So programming parks, the city does a great job of that, but how can we do that in some locations that maybe don't have as much programming? Maybe there isn't really anything going on in that park at certain times of the day. So thinking about not just the physical aspects, but also ways to bring in people, like movies, concerts, all sorts of different events. Other elements are more designed and more constructed, like this lighting system. And again, this can really be creative. This isn't an off-the-shelf lighting system, this is really a customized piece, but it does interact with the surrounding environment, in this case, really reflecting the natural landscape with native trees, and making this place much more vibrant, especially when it's getting a lot of use in the evening. So I mentioned earlier reinvesting in aging parks and facilities. I'd like to talk just a few seconds on this topic in particular. So this map is another outcome of the survey. Again, if some of you took the map, excuse me, the survey, it was map-based, so you could respond to questions and drop a pin to answer a question. So all those little dots indicate somebody that placed a pin on that particular site to say, here's what I think should change. So you can see those clusters, there are a lot around those big community parks. Obviously, they get a lot of activity, they're very popular, but almost every park in the system has some idea for an improvement, or something that someone wants to change. So when we asked that question, not only did folks place pins on those specific locations, but they also told us what they would change. And right off the bat, as I mentioned, making it feel safer, and there are nuanced responses to that, but overall, a feeling of improving safety. Cleaning the site up, fixing things that are broken, beautifying the space, and providing more things to do. So again, a lot of these comments go to existing sites. You can see there's some pins placed where parks don't exist, but by and large, it's really about a need to take care of what McMinnville has and its existing parks. So just a few more slides I just wanted to highlight before we turn it over for some discussion. I wanted to remind everyone about the focus on equity. This is a community-driven plan, but it's also intended to be an equitable process and plan. And how do we define equity and park and recreation access? And so we've shown you this definition before, I think it's important to remind everyone how we're defining those terms. This comes from NRPA, and the definition is the just and fair quantity, proximity, and connections to quality parks and green spaces, recreation facilities, as well as programs that are safe, inclusive, culturally relevant, and welcoming to everyone. So again, this is the definition that the city and project team have been using to base all these different decisions, from outreach to the recommendations that go into the plan. And as part of that, this, again, is a slide you've probably seen before, a map that we've shown you before, but it does kind of round out what we heard from community needs. This map shows, as a refresher, all of the city's parks, and those red shades are showing you distances from developed parks. So the darker the shade of red, the closer that area is to a developed park. And obviously, that means the reverse is true, the areas that are outside of those red shades are areas that don't have great nearby access to a developed park. And so this is one way we can think about equity. Is it just? Is it accessible? Is it equitable? So when we look at this map, I think there's some patterns that begin to emerge. First and foremost, there's some great park access throughout McMinnville. A lot of places have multiple different directions you can go to get to a park within about, you know, a quarter-mile distance from your home. So really good access in a lot of locations, but of course, a lot of places that don't have great access. So just some highlights, there is really good access in some locations, however, there are a lot of barriers, and there are a lot of places that are what someone on the DEIC called a park desert. So we're going to start to look at how do we improve access to parks and recreation in those locations. We've talked about, especially with the school district, the role that the district has in the parks and recreation system, the fact that some schools fill gaps in these underserved areas. You can see Memorial Elementary School and McMinnville High, they're both right in the middle of these areas without park access. So can these locations, can these spaces improve? Can they change? Can they perhaps provide more recreation access in these locations? So that was a little fast-paced overview of where we've been and what we've heard. It's fairly high-level, but really, to get through the conversation that we wanted to ask you all, I wanted to make sure we spent some time on some discussion questions. So the vision and goals. So again, this is a key part of this plan. This is a long-term plan. Part of the plan is very specific, it provides direction, but a lot of it is aspirational. It conveys from city leadership, from city staff, the direction the city is taking with parks and recreation. So thinking about the long-term future, what do we really want McMinnville to become? What are the great things that already exist? That, of course, is very true, but there's always something to change, always something to improve on. So just to be clear about how we're using some of these terms, I just wanted to point out how we're defining the difference between the vision and then goals and objectives. So the vision really is the big-picture, long-term description of what the community aspires to achieve. Goals start to narrow down, how do we start to attain that vision? What are some goals to provide direction? And then getting even more specific into the objectives. So these start to become more specific actions that need to happen to take place to start meeting the goals and then to realize that long-term vision. So the city has a great parks plan that was adopted in nineteen ninety-nine, so it's getting a little old in years, but I thought it was important to remember what the vision was established in that plan, and obviously, it's an existing plan, so this is the current vision. So that's in the handout that you have, but I just thought it was important to go back through this vision statement. Parks, recreation, programs, and facilities, and open spaces are essential elements in enhancing the quality of life in McMinnville. They foster healthy, active lifestyles, strengthen the sense of community, prevent crime, protect the environment, and contribute to a healthy economy. The Parks and Recreation Department will provide an interconnected parks and recreation system. This vision statement is a little different in the sense that instead of breaking into goals and policies, there's a list of bulleted kind of goal statements, and some of them could be more related to objectives. Those are included in the handout you have. So those are really part of the vision, but I thought the vision summary is important to call out. Susan pointed out that the city's strategic plan, MacTown twenty-three, thirty-two, also has a vision for the city, and that is a collaborative and caring city inspiring an exceptional quality of life. So again, important context for what we're asking you tonight is considering this vision statement and including the strategic plan vision. What does city council think about that current vision? What are some things you like? And what are some things that you change? After all you've seen, and just, not even just tonight's presentation, but you all are the eyes and ears of the community, what are some things you're hearing that you think need to be reflected in the vision statement? So that's the first question for discussion. And the second is really starting to get into more specifics. Ultimately, the park system plan is providing policy, its policy direction for the city. So this process will also be updating the city's comprehensive plan for parks and recreation. So as a starting point, we want to find out what are the specific objectives and some of those goals that council is really set on? What are some things that we want to transfer into the Parks and Recreation System Plan that we need to know about? So two questions, one really about the vision, what do you like? What needs to change? What would you add? And then the second is some specific goals or objectives or policy statements you would like to see. And if you have ideas, it'd be great to hear those. If you've got questions, obviously, that's why we're here as well. Questions you'd like to talk through, that's great, we can add that to the list as well. So with that, I think we'll pause here, and I'd like to turn it back over to city council for your thoughts or questions.
Wonderful, thank you. And maybe we could stop the screen share, especially since we have the printed version here, although I recognize we may have, we do have some counselors on Zoom. Well, I'm going to start here. I noticed in the all ages, you identified, it said all ages, and then it said eight to eighty, and I thought about my three-year-old grand niece and my eighty-three-year-old father and thought, I want them to use our parks too. Could you expand on the eight to eighty?
Yeah, I believe that eight to eighty was a comment from our council meeting in June of two thousand and twenty-two, and that is a, so I think it came up from a council discussion last year, but the term is a pretty well-known one in the kind of the planning circles to describe an environment, a built environment in particular, that is really appealing to a younger person all the way up to an older adult. And, you know, does it really truly start at eight and end at eighty? No. I think the idea is that it's a, you know, easier to remember, easier to apply term, but I think that's a great point. It's considering younger children and older adults that are especially living a lot longer and having more healthy and active lifestyles.
Right, wonderful. So we have two questions in front of us, council, and we'll just go around the dais for some initial thoughts before we dig in too much. Counselor Chenoweth, do you mind starting us this evening? Counselor Chenoweth, do you mind starting us this evening?
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have a lot of thoughts on the vision. One of the things that kind of leaped out at me as I was listening is on page seventeen of the presentation and the reinvesting and aging parks and facilities page with the graph. The first three items. One of the concerns that I have with our park system in general is we've had a tendency to build out beyond what we're able to maintain. And the first three items on that that our residents pointed out seem to be conveying that same message. Lack of safety in the parks can be attributed quite quickly to not enough police force available to support those parks and keep keep them at a safe level that we need to keep them at. They're not being kept clean. I assume that's probably a reference to needles and problems of that nature. Again, that's manpower. Both of those two are manpower. The third one, fix things that are broken. Again, I I hear the same message coming from our constituents that we've built out beyond what we've been able to support. And and I I voice this routinely with with Park and Rec and and with Public Works that whatever we decide to do going forward, I what weighs on me is we need to be very cognizant that we're not building out beyond what we can actually maintain. Because if we have all of the wonderful parks that we possibly could envision, but nobody's willing to go use them, we have really nothing available for them. So that's kind of the first thing, the first thought. And the thing that kind of, I guess I want to kick off with is whatever we do go forward with, we need to be very, very cognizant and maybe include some language that requires the council to actually, if we're going to build out, we're also required to put in sustainability for those parks we build out going forward.
Thank you, Councilor Gary.
As always, my favorite topic of all time. The on the subject of the questions at hand, what changes would you suggest? And I was part of the the DEIC version of this conversation, so I feel like you guys probably have all all of mine comments already. So I I think just moving moving beyond, moving towards a a clearer vision with goals to support it and objectives to support that versus one big hunk of meat that tries to do it all, as as the 1999 version had, is really the the first big step. And then to the second part of that, you know, things like having this plan put at the forefront of the future planning for the community's Parks and Open Spaces Plan capturing capturing that the sort of the new found love and appreciation and protection of the shrinking public, true public spaces, right? You know, the the burden to get into anywhere is growing higher and higher all the time. And our community government is one of the last bastions of protecting and and providing for the biggest truly free public outdoor space that we want to, we want to broadcast that as big as we can and make sure that everyone knows that they're always welcome in our in our parks and open spaces and that those advance, do everything we can to sort of advance social equity and ignite and encourage creativity and positive, positive thinking and a positive environment. And once we push that up the hill, it'll be a big snowball that just becomes this really fun ball of energy that grows. I mean, it's sort of like what you were talking about, John. You roll by a park and no one's there. It's like, ooh, I must have missed the memo. This is a bad one. It just, it's totally natural. I totally understand. So just getting it to the point where it's, this is what we do. This is where we go. This is where we can be and not have to buy something to use the bathroom type of thing, you know? Making sure they're multimodal and that contribute to a healthy environment are all other things that I have on here. So that just sort of connotation that they are spaces that sort of invigorate that the creativity and excite people on top of just being a fun place for kids to burn energy. Which is important, too.
Thank you. Counselor Menke.
I don't have little ones anymore, so I I don't spend as much time in parks as I used to. I do know that the city park near where I live, which is in the West Hills, has kind of has shifts through the day. You sometimes see a lot of families and parents and stuff. And on the weekends, you see games being played. And I know for myself that I I use the the walking park's a great deal. I guess most of the time I do not feel unsafe in a park. I mean, maybe into the later part of the evening, if I'm walking in winter or something like that, I might feel unsafe. But even when, even when we had the ice storms and I was walking under trees that were loaded with ice, I really wasn't too concerned. Fortunately, I didn't get hit. Strangely enough. I I think your vision statement actually pretty much hits hits everything. I I assume that this is the vision statement we're supposed to be critiquing here that is on the first page, fourth paragraph down. There are other things that you mentioned here. Am I incorrect in that?
That is the vision from the 1999.
1999, okay. So we want something.
We want to update it as part of this.
We want something new and robust.
Yes, and and modern and reflects truly the vision of how we would like to see McMinnville grow within the fabric of the parks and the interconnectedness. And I think even.
I think if you could somehow say for all ages, I think that is really important because the eight to eighty doesn't quite encompass everyone that it should probably, but.
Maybe the Bing Crosby kids from one to ninety-two, is that better?
There you go, one to ninety-two. He still gets, my grandma, my mother-in-law used to walk it, and she was like eighty-three, eighty-four, or ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five.
Okay, I'll give you ninety-three.
So, yeah. So possibly, yes, incorporating some depth of how this is for everyone and how to bring, yes. I mean, I just like to go out and watch the dogs personally, but. I think particularly focusing on an active, healthy lifestyle is important. And just equal distribution of parks and recreation opportunities throughout the city, probably more than anything else, equity for everyone would be my thoughts, perhaps some additions.
Thank you. And we'll go to Zoom to Counselor Payne.
Thank you. I agree with most what the counselors have already stated. I wanna, since Counselor Chenoweth started it off, I will hit it home that it would be nice to have, you know, just some some long-term planning on caring for the parks. Literally yesterday, I went to, I think it's called Village Park? I may have that wrong. It's in the cul-de-sac of Norton Court and Aaron Court. And it's a pretty park. It's so lovely shaded. And it's just one of those neighborhood parks that not a lot of folks know about. And it does have some some neglect, and I think it, because it's not one of the more well-attended parks, those kind of mini parks, so to speak, get maybe not a lot of the front and center attention. And then with the with the safety, I know that Susan's team is working a lot on, well, and with the support of Public Works on making Wortman Park safer. But that's the only park that screams safety concerns. And then occasionally, the city park, better known as the Dragon Park. And I would love, I actually talked to Director Muir about this several months ago about the the eighty or eighty-two, whichever, or ninety-two, whichever you prefer to go with those low low-impact kind of exercise opportunities because we do live in an area where people do need to get outdoors when it is appropriate and not freezing or snowing or hailing or whatever. So to that end, I would say I would love to see a more broad, I guess, a diversity of equipment. So our water, you know, our splash pads, great, and the parks have neat designs. But I would love if there was just more variety in the types of equipment that was included in the parks.
Thank you. Council president is, might be otherwise engaged in the wrapping up Fire District meeting, but has logged in here, I know, so that he can make a quick transition. I feel like this is enough of a prompting that if he'd like to unmute and is able, then that's the warning. Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, council president.
Thanks for that. I actually literally just walked out of the fire department. Yeah, lots of great stuff in this. I admittedly was in and out for this work session. But I would like to second just making sure we have capacity to properly maintain our parks. And, you know, as we look to rejuvenate parks and reimagine them, that we look for things of environmental design from bathrooms to equipment to lighting so we can increase that capacity without increasing our FTEs. Other than that, I will chat offline with Susan some more once I re-watch this Zoom. But thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back around the council. I'll just add my thoughts before we do that. One is that I think that emphasis on access is so important. While, you know, I think we have some kudos around the Jay Pearson Park. It's very unique in the city of McMinnville, and so therefore, it's not necessarily accessible just because it has accessible equipment, because you can't necessarily pack up your kids and drive across town when you need to go to the park. You don't necessarily have the the time for that or the ability to get there. So making sure that we have inclusive play equipment whenever we reinvest. I don't, I don't believe it should be that we are isolating, I think that all of our play equipment going forward, that 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 should be taken into consideration. So whenever we make those investments, we're making sure that we're providing access equitably at the same time. I know that the, we had some brief conversation about bringing in some sort of community or edible garden space, and I didn't specifically see that called out here. But I want to bring attention to it again. It's something that community members bring up to me a lot. It's also something I've heard from other counselors on the dais. And I fully understand that that might bring with it a maintenance burden that's that that we can't bear, but I'd like to see the consideration of it. In terms of the ongoing maintenance, I think, you know, as we continue to invest in our parks, making sure that our plantings are native, are low-water intensive, so that we're we're not needing to put in as complex of 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 systems in order to maintain, maintain those those plants. And and then the emphasis on safety, I think that that I I want to make sure we're thinking about that in a really broad scope. So I heard the, I heard the comments of, you know, are we talking about this in terms of who's in the park? Or are there, you know, are there are there activities happening in the park we don't want to have happen? So I think that's one aspect of, that's one aspect of safety. But but that that safety goes along with, some of the other things are already mentioned in terms of, you know, lighting or or access to communications. But but I would challenge us to think about safety in a much broader realm. And I had a few examples in in mind, but they've they've kind of slipped out. And then lastly, on kind of that long-term maintenance and how do we continue to invest in our parks? I think it is important that we keep both Counselor Gary's point of, you know, public parks. I mean, they exist for the public. They are specifically to provide that communal space. And actually, I think COVID did a wonderful job of highlighting that for us and that parks workers were essential workers and and how important it was to have that that space available. And I also think that this is the appropriate time to look at, you know, if if we need to be redistributing any of those assets, how do we have great parks accessible in all of our neighborhoods? But if we have an overabundance of of parks, so to Counselor Payne's point, the, I think, I think you were referencing Village Mill Park. But, you know, is, what's a better use of that, especially when you have Thompson Park within, I don't know, a quarter mile? Something that, so kind of keeping that community front of mind. I don't have specific language suggestions for the ninety-nine vision. I think the ninety-nine vision hits on it, and it just needs to be modernized. And the language just needs to be tightened up to really give that clear direction of how we interpret these things now, which is very different than how we were interpreting those things in in ninety-nine. So that's my feedback. And then let's just open this up again. I know Counselor Gary, go for it.
Thanks. The couple tags onto that and then a couple other things is when, as Remy was talking about safety, it was, I guess, having an answer when we talk about safety in parks, that we know what the answer is to the question of safe for who? Making sure we're able to to understand who we're making it safe for and that that we support that vision of who that is. In terms of environmental design, I think incorporating not only native plantings, but the upcoming fire resiliency, any way that that can be incorporated. I think on top of public resources as our outdoor space, bathrooms is a vital public resource. And I think that should be integral as a policy decision to any expansion of those outdoor spaces. I think also in terms of Remy, what you were saying about looking at if we have pieces of undeveloped property that could be better used or developed partially that that is a clogging an area and could be better used. The other side of that, I think the park should always be looking to acquire and 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 take on new areas and and in terms of open spaces and and development. I'll always add my tag on for waterways and river walks. Any way to activate the water would be swell and then.
No pun intended.
I intended that one. And then a question for the consultant would be, as as new Parks and Rec, open spaces are master, are master planned, is there a growing recognition in the language? Not that mental health wasn't invented in nineteen ninety-nine, but is there a growing, is there a growing sentiment around, including language around how parks can create sort of calming spaces to help take a take a break and take a mental break and and talk about that? I'd be interested in in having language in there that talked about that. I feel like this, our culture is headed in a direction where we want to make sure we recognize and uplift that as a vital component of what we can offer.
Absolutely. Yeah, there definitely is. And I think it's not that, as you mentioned, that was just realized since nineteen ninety-nine. I think it was, it was a thing in, you know, the turn of the millennium, but not recognized as such, as as you've described it. So that is definitely something that we will be applying to this plan. I think we mentioned it, Susan, to either the Planning Commission meeting or the DEIC meeting. But one example I gave was health professionals now more commonly prescribing being in the outdoors, you know, having having a a prescription to say that, hey, this this can help in so many ways, you know, relieving stress, relieving anxiety, just personal and emotional well-being. That's absolutely part of park planning and design. So we'll we'll definitely take a look at that for the the goals and policies as well.
Very good. Yeah, I think I think I'd feel good about having language in there that highlights that. I know it maybe flies in. I know it maybe flies in conflict with my earlier thing about being exciting and invigorating and woo-hoo, but also calming and and regenerative. Okay, that's good for me.
Thank you. Any other councillors want to add? Councillor Genowitz?
Yeah, I just I just want to clarify that that I was only speaking to the graph that our residents are saying that they're concerned about safety as their top issue. And I want to be responsive to what they had to say. And I agree with you, Remy. When we're dealing with trying to make parks more safe, there are a lot of different ways to do it beyond just policing. There are there are different approaches, uh keeping the parks active and full, uh lighting, um various different things. But but I just, I like I I want to redrill the point that it's very important that we're very cognizant, very intentional in our planning, that we don't build out beyond that which we can support. I moving off of that, I want to put a plug in. I agree with Zach. I really would like to see if it can be done in such a way that we can maintain it, some use of the waterways. And my favorite parks right now are those that are more open or or more uh you just walk through them, like Rotary Nature Park and and Airport Park, Quarry Park, which I finally got to actually go visit. I'd heard about it, but I hadn't seen it. Um, but those kind of open spaces, to your point, are more the kind of parks that I enjoy. Of course, I don't have, my grandkids are little, my kids are older. So I don't I don't do as much in the in the playground now as I used to do. But so I do want to put plugs for that. I think open space is done in such a way that we are are putting lots of native life, maintaining the environment the way it was. It is easier to maintain, and I think it's something we need lots of. In terms of uh maybe it wasn't a thing in 1999, I'm old enough to remember 1999. And mental health was definitely the understanding that being outside um was was very well understood, that it was important to be to to be in in open spaces. And going back to my childhood years, I could remember being kicked out of the house on a regular basis to enjoy the fresh air. And the importance of knowing that being outside is better than being cooped up inside on your in those days, it was Atari 5200, but whatever electronic devices there are today. So just want to speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, anything to add either councillor Payne or council president Garvin?
I'm okay. Thank you.
I just, yes, native plantings and fire resistant barriers and low water requirements are extremely important.
Thank you. And councillor Menke?
I think any opportunity to commune with nature is a good thing. And much as councillor Genowitz said, I I prefer the parks where you can go and kind of be a little bit isolated and see some of it. I think in particular of of the planning that's being done right now up on Foxridge Road and the possibility of having a a park at the quarry there before you can see the geese fly in periodically is really special. So, yeah, anything like that, um, perhaps a little bit more some equipment that's a little bit different out there to maybe help older people and and younger people too. And, you know, maybe not as much plantings as we have, you know, kids like to play on rocks too. They really do. So think in terms of some other things that you might do that would be exciting for kids to and and elder adults to participate in. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Do you have any closing remarks, Director Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to um reflect and say thank you for some of the um wording that you gave us tonight. I think as I was listening to the conversation about eight to 80 or um different parts of accessibility in our parks, it it made me think that the more we call out who is welcome in our parks, more specifically in a vision, the more we set up an opportunity for somebody to not be included in that. And the eight to 80 is a perfect example of that. That was not designed to feel like ends of this age spectrum were left out. But in fact, that's the way um somebody who might read that. And so I think thinking about the term that we've learned during some of our trainings about belonging and creating a sense of belonging for our entire community is a way to say it that that will stand the test of time. Um, and will also address the the very different perspectives that we have in our community. Related to safety, I do want to just follow up and say, you may remember the work session that the chief and I did, talking about the three legs of the stool for park safety, which was programming, police and maintenance. So those things all still go hands hand in hand for us. And related to the maintenance, this is the challenge of a plan like this is being visionary and also understanding that comes with really practical day-to-day costs. The good news is that is implemented through the budget. So the council is involved in setting that level of standards in terms of what we can and can't maintain at acreage. And ideally, you will also see the capital improvement plan, which will be talking about the construction of new parks at the same time that you're reviewing the budget. So if you have to make, if the community or the council has to make difficult decisions, those things will happen um and come together during those processes. I think that's all I wanted to mention. It sounds like um we're ready for a little bit of a re- relook at the vision and modernizing it and thinking about how we can continue to reflect the values that McMenville has.
Can I say one thing to that? One of the things that concerns me is it seems like I I don't want to make the mistake of not being proactive. You know, you made the comment that the good news is that we we get to make the decisions during the budget budget decision, budget-making process. But the reality is we the decision was made when we built the park. If we don't, if we don't, if we've built it and we don't maintain it, we're going to have problems. So the discussion of of when uh of the need to, what dollars it's going to take to maintain it needs to be taking place not at the budget decision process, but at the time that we're building out the parks. And so I would love to see a pro- the process maybe modified to where in that discussion of when we're building out the parks, we're doing the repairs, whatever. Like right now, we're we're getting ready to redo all of the water park. What is the expend- what is the maintenance going to be ongoing to maintain that to keep it where it is? Have that be part of that process at the beginning, not in the budget every year? I mean, we have to do it in the budget every year too, but you you understand what I'm saying? Am I making sense?
I do, and I hear you. And what you don't have a good example of now is what we hope to include in the budget document every year, which is called the capital improvement plan for the five-year capital park construction projects. We don't have a reference other than um Leland's way he does capital improvement planning. You would you will be able to see more of that. Um, and I understand exactly what you mean. And and believe believe me from the public work staff, and I know Anne is on the line here. We want to make it as efficient as possible uh when we do these things too. And actually, that is pushing the Discovery Meadows. The 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 age of that facility makes it so much more time-consuming to maintain and also makes it so much less reliable um to our community. So hopefully those things, when you see this plan come back with a capital improvement plan, you'll see those things knitted together a little bit better than you have in the past.
Well, and I don't want it to make it sound like I'm bashing on people before me and bad decision-making process before me. I'm not trying to do that. I'm just saying going forward, I want to see those costs at the front end so that we can say, you know, if we're building this out, this may be more than what we can maintain for the next five to 10 years.
And I think councillor, what director mayor is saying is that's the intention. That's what you're, that's what the council will be receiving. Okay, wonderful. Well, it's 6:59 PM. I'm going to close the work session. We're taking a one-minute break and we'll start the council session at 7:00 PM. Thank you. If there's some type of follow-up, will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, the quasi-judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature, and we will announce your name once your time is up, or you can send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudius Osneros. Is there anyone signed up for public comment?
Uh, no one has signed up, but I did want to state for the record that Mark Davis did submit a public comment. It is on the revised agenda on page four.
Thank you very much. Uh, does anybody uh in the gallery wish to provide any public comment or additional public comment? Does anybody on Zoom wish to provide public comment? All right, wonderful. Thank you. And then we will start this evening with presentations. Uh, we're starting with a stewardship stewardship report on city insurance. Um, and we'll be receiving this presentation from Ryan Hartzell. And for those of you that uh have been um with the city for some time, will remember that Gary historically has provided our uh insurance. He and Ryan worked together for decades, and uh Gary has retired. And uh just uh in and while he did present the insurer, was co-presented insurance information last week to Water and Light, he also let me know that his retirement is now in full effect and he would not be here today. So we hope his retirement is off to a wonderful start and lovely to see you again. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, everybody, and uh I'm Ryan Hartzell, and uh it's a pleasure to to get to uh handle the presentation. So I I saw insurance was first on the list, so um that's always hard to give insurance presentations to a large group. It can be a little bit dry, so we'll uh we'll zip it up as much as we can. So um I am a fourth-generation McMenville resident. I love I love McMenville. I left for four years to go to college and um I I'm back and and don't ever plan to leave. So this is my home. Uh, we love it uh here, and my family, uh, you know, moved away. Uh, I had one leave and the rest all came back after they saw other places in the state of Oregon. So um just uh really pleased to to get to serve you all um and talk about insurance. So with that said, um, the insurance is more complex and dynamic as the city continues to grow and all sorts of just really good things going on. I want to say that um Jeff Towery and I got a chance to uh to meet uh about a month ago. Maybe it was a little bit farther than that, and I wanted to really see how the city of McMenville compared peer group to other community cities in the state of Oregon that participate in the CIS insurance program. And it was really exciting. Uh, the main categories, just frequency of loss, size of claims for general liability, property, auto physical damage, you know, the comp and collision on the vehicles, auto liability, uh property claims. Gosh, just couldn't say enough good things about the trends and the analysis we saw on that. So thank you uh, everybody that serves, you know, uh in a public official capacity or as an employee to maintain those those trends. It was very refreshing to see that. So we literally looked at the cutoff was sort of 25,000 uh and and larger in population to give us enough good data to look at. So with that said, um, the CIS is the bulk part of the renewal for the insurance. You guys are a member, you know, you own CIS as your membership in that organization. We're really pleased to see the the renewal at 11.32% increase. So of course, last year, 16, it's in the packet there, 11.32. We we were thinking the property was really going to hit us hard this year. And I know that uh Jennifer and I had planned on, uh, maybe it was going to be a little bit larger than than perhaps before that came in. And I know Mayor Drabkin serves on the Water and Light Board, and 11.32 looks looks good to the one, of course, that we had to uh talk about last week. So uh very pleased with that uh increase. And not all of it was just rate increase. Some of that was the property, you know, itself, what we have going on to rebuild a building. Of course, is, you know, very expensive with inflation and getting contractors available to do it. So we had to look at, you know, making sure our our values on our buildings were enough. So that was 7% of just getting us up to a $222 million blank of insurance for every structure that we have. A few small changes, uh, we added the Comcast building and a statue over by the Atticus were just kind of some of the changes there. Comcast building was kind of fun. Um, I, of course, remember it was Flight 97. It was a good breakfast restaurant town. And uh a little bit of history there was was uh fun to reminisce about how that building came to be. So that was mainly the only property change in terms of acquiring new structures we had to pick up in the portfolio of insurance. Workers' compensation, if there was ever a year, it was a good time to go to what we call guarantee cost plan. That just means you pay a premium if you have a loss. Um, there's no sort of reserves that you have to do on anything. And uh that worked out very well. 2021, 2022 is a little bit of a spike in insurance claims. But this current year, we're looking a lot better. So we went from 30 claims um in the last policy year previous to this current policy period, we got all the way down to 12. So, gosh, that's just good news. We love seeing those trends. So uh through, I just checked before I came to the meeting here, we're still hanging at about $24,000 mark uh for claims paid out. So um I think we saw a little bit of an increase, of course, this year, because what happened was 21 and 22, that policy year got uh picked up in the experience rating. But I I see a really positive trend on the horizon for that. Of course, uh, the big change is these numbers are very temporary with the the fire district uh that was passed by the voters. We understand there will be some changes uh, you know, on on all parts of this insurance program for the fire district because they will be having their own insurance policy at some point once once that is going. And that'll be with SDAO, and they usually look at a January renewal. So that's currently on here. So that's currently on here is Jennifer and I built the forecast to look at leaving it on here for now, but we know changes are becoming, you know, all the exposures with the building and the trucks and the employees. Lastly, the, the only thing sort of left hanging out there to report to the council is just the cyber insurance. We're continuing to stay as close as we can. I think we dealt with a pretty large increase last year. We went out, really shopped the market to see where we're gonna be. We're gonna do that again. There's a couple more carriers have entered the marketplace. We want to look at the limits of insurance, but we didn't want to dive in anything too quick on that. That's a, that's an August renewal. We'll report back what we find there. But those, those risks just continue to just get ever more interesting with ransomware, email compromise. It's just a dynamic thing and it's not so much mainly that the city's computer system is not protected. It's excellent and we're really happy with what, you know, how the questions come in on the applications, but it's really mainly the vendors you work with and, you know, particularly people that are third parties that look at the system and sometimes their, their computers aren't, aren't very strong in that regard. So with that said, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from council?
Thank you, Ryan, and welcome to Gary's seat. You did great. My question results around workers' comp and you called that out a little bit in the safe paragraph that you, you talk about that. The guaranteed cost plan, will our experience rating modifications still come into effect? And is that, should that be something that we should be concerned about with it going from eighty-three cents to ninety-nine cents? And is there things you would recommend we explore from a policy perspective, like getting people back on light duty quicker or, or things like that, that typically in the private sector bring down rate modification?
Yes, very good question. Thank you for asking that. So I don't see any trends in there just because from, you know, this current policy period wasn't picked up and once, once that does with twelve claims versus thirty, we are gonna see a positive increase. So you're still under one, so point ninety-nine, one is sort of average where all the rates start. Anything below that, you get a little bit of a discount. I work with lots of private employers and some public entities where, you know, are sitting at one point four, one point five. So really good question about what you can look at from policy perspective and gosh, just I, I don't, I don't see any, any trends that would be alarming. I don't see any, uh, I don't see any frequent flyers on the list of claims, meaning, you know, employees that may have a pattern of a lot of losses or types of injuries. I don't see anything necessarily with body parts, really things we're diving into to look at analysis. There's really no consistency. If we had COVID claims from twenty and twenty-one, those don't count against the experience mod, so that's good news because we did have a couple of those, one pretty large one and we got to pull that one out, so that was, that was good news. But yeah, just a blip on the radar because of this, the twenty-one, twenty-two policy period gets counted in, but in under one is, is nothing, is not alarming whatsoever. Light duty is in place. We see time loss claims down significantly, so once you return to work on light duty, that, that stops sort of the time loss and the city has, you know, established a pretty good, you know, return to work, time loss, light duty work.
Thank you. Other questions? Any questions from you, Councilor Payne?
Um, no, I think I appreciate Scott and his willingness to keep us informed, so I'm sure that there's already been plenty of conversations that we've been involved in, so thank you.
Wonderful, well, thank you. And I don't think, we don't have any action required, so thank you very much for your time and for being here this evening. Look forward to seeing you again soon.
Sounds good. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We'll now go into our public hearings. We will begin the public hearing process, all public hearings being heard this, for all the public hearings being heard this evening, and we do have multiple. For all of these, if you're testifying, you will please state your first and last name for the record. First, we are going to, public hearing on uses of state revenue sharing for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is approved by the budget committee. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding these resolutions? Not hearing any, I will call on our finance director, Jennifer Quayar, to give a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So this public hearing is regarding next year's fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, proposed uses of state revenue sharing, dollars that we get through formulas from the state of Oregon that are shared out to cities and often to counties as well in their formulas. So having a, having a public hearing is a part of the statutorily required process, so that's why we're doing this this evening. I can tell you from our web-based system that is open to, to take public testimony on this hearing and others. No public comment was received through that, that avenue. Let's see, I guess also of interest to note is the proposed uses that were laid out earlier in the process with the budget committee. No change has been made to those, so there's no additional information or, and nothing's changed in terms of that. So the overall, we estimate a little over half a million dollars in this category of revenue and we propose to distribute it across the general fund proportionate to their draw on unrestricted in, in the fund overall. So if folks have any questions or I guess the, the comment, the public comment period, I guess can be open.
Thank you very much. Does any counselor have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, we'll now start to hear public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We'll start with people who are signed up in advance to testify. Is, has anyone signed up to testify?
No one has signed up to testify.
Okay. Is there anyone in civic hall who wishes to testify on this topic? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to testify on this topic? Is there anyone on the phone? Period. Question mark, rather. No, okay. And, okay, well then this concludes our public testimony for this evening. Does staff have anything they'd like to add to the record? No? Okay, great. Does council have any additional or any questions whatsoever? Nope, excellent. I will now close the public hearing. Every once in a while, it's fun to do that. All right. We'll now here, have a public hearing on the proposed, sorry, we just did that. We'll now have a public hearing to consider resolution number twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-five, a resolution adopting a planning fee schedule and appealing all previous resolutions adopting planning fee schedules at the time this fee schedule becomes effective. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding the resolution?
Mayor, you skipped the B, which was the public hearing on the proposal, proposed fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Oh, you, indeed, I did, thank you. Strike the last minute. We'll now have a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget is approved by the budget committee. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding these resolutions? I'd like to call on our finance director, Jennifer Quayar, to give a presentation on the topic.
Yes, thank you. So this is another statutorily required component of the budget process. And so this is regarding the fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four approved city budget as approved by the budget committee on June sixteenth. And as posted in our newspaper of record, the News Register has all of the details there and we also posted it on our website. And again, no public comment came through the web portal way that folks can, can share public testimony or comment on this. So I guess the resolution to pass the budget will happen later.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And questions from counselors, Counselor Chinoweth?
Yes, thank you. I just have a question I meant to ask during the budget and I forgot, so this actually isn't for you, though. It's for chief of police.
Police.
So my question for you is what's, what, what will it take to get fully staffed for SROs for the upcoming school year?
Great question. Well, obviously a lot of, you know, candidly, I might be very stupid and say we're gonna need lateral to get somebody in the, in the schools, both schools for that matter. So we're not in a position right now to even discuss having a second SRO in there. We're that far back from where we need to be to free up patrol resources to, to allow that patrol officer to eventually slide into that SRO spot. So we need some luck. We need aggressive lateral recruitment, candidly.
Council president?
To dovetail on that, chief, just to clarify, it's not in need of additional FTEs in the budget, but the need to fill vacancies through laterals so they can get through the FTE process or the field training officer, FTO process quicker.
That's correct. We, we have the FTEs to do it. We've done it in the past and we're just not in that position right now.
So again, but, so I, you're, I hear you telling me why we're not doing it. My question is, you're saying luck is the answer to get this done? I mean, I, I, I want, I want, one of my concerns is, you know, the, 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 the agency that's training our police officers are seeing such an increase, they can't keep up with training. So I'm concerned why it is that we're not being able to staff here in McMinnville. What's it gonna take to get there?
I think, I think I was oversimplifying and when I said luck, it, that does take some luck, takes aggressive recruiting. The timeframe with academy, right now, when we bring somebody on in a couple of days, their academy date isn't till November now. That's as soon as we can get them in. Academy has been given permission fiscally to increase capacity within them. If we had just done what it was slated to do under the current budget, it's since been modified, we would have an even greater leg time to get people in. Actually, the, the window would increase to get people trained with this, with the new model that they've come out with and I believe they'll be executing sometime in October, expanding the classes from forty to sixty per class. That'll trim some of that time down. That coupled with OSP having sort of their own academy will also free up some, some spots for the academy classes. Now, are you asking what else do I, I, I need to get people through, I can, I can only train so many people at a given time. So we've got four people in training right now. We've actually got five. One is on military leave right now and we're gonna bring in another officer that's likely a lateral officer and we're gonna be stretched right there. Six is our max and we're gonna, and, and to that point, we've still got five to six openings. So to that end, we're, we're, captains and I have discussed this, we're actually probably a year out from realizing if we don't have anybody leave to be fully staffed, to be able to execute our, what we, our, our commitments are to our partners, whether it's the school district or, or others. So yes.
Can I repeat back to you what you just said so I can make sure I heard it correctly? So what I heard you saying was right now you have five or six bodies that you're in the process of training at one level or another, and that's the maximum amount that this, that the police department at one time can be training, so you can't bring any more new ones in until which time those are fully trained and, and in place?
That, that is correct.
Okay. That, that helps, and, and then after those are done, we're still five or six FTEs budgeted down?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And so you're thinking a year before we'll be fully staffed again?
I, I would say, yes, that's our, our discussions with our command staff is just that. I mean, we've got a number of PTOs, police training officers, the FTOs. There's only a limited number of them and, and candidly, we can send them to training, but the training classes are limited and not everybody's, we've got a very young department, not everybody's ready to train. So to that end, we are limited with just the sheer number of veteran officers that we feel comfortable can train our new recruits to become the best police officers for the city.
Okay, I have a lot more questions down this line, so maybe we'll meet offline because I don't want to tie up the rest of this meeting. So thank you.
Thank you very much. There's one point I, I would appreciate clarity from Counselor Chinoweth's comments about the abundance of potential recruits. Most of the information that I feel I've received has been that we're at historic lows nationwide in terms of interest in policing, that there's been mass exodus from the profession. And, and so those two things just don't align for me. And so if you could help me, I understand it's not specific to this, but since it came up in this moment in time, I would just appreciate any clarity on, on that.
Before the chief does, let me tell you what I'm referring to. There's been numerous articles in the news about the fact that the number of recruits coming in are so high, they've had to increase the number of training programs that they're doing right now to make room for those recruits that are coming in. Now, whether that's making up for the, the, those that are leaving, probably not. We're seeing, we're seeing a pretty high attrition rate. But that's what I was specifically referring to is the increased number of classes that are being offered because the number of recruits coming in are so high. And I think the chief made reference to that even in during our budget meeting. So that's what I was referring to, not saying overall.
No, thank you, counselor, just, just, just a point of clarity. I appreciate it. I'm not, I'm not arguing with your point, I just want clarity.
Historic lows in applicants, yes. I think HR has touched on that during our budget meetings. The backlog is not just people retiring, it's people leaving the profession altogether. That has caused a massive shortage of our officers. It hasn't, has nothing to do with compensation. It has zero to do with compensation. It has to do a hundred percent with the work being done out there that is stressing our, our cops, that is pulling them, our resources so thin that it is undesirable for those folks to want to get into the profession. Period. Period.
Counselor Mankey?
So I'm kind of assuming that the reason that they've increased the classes and there's a lot of people pushing recruits through is because there's, there's this big deficit of trained officers and it's not necessarily because there's a lot of people out there that just really want to be a policeman right now.
That's correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
And city manager Towery?
Mayor, just one, one more thing in support of what the chief's talking about. The, the, the lack of space in academies is undersized even for agencies who are juggling a huge number of deficits in, so, so the fact that the academy is increasing the number of classes and the size of classes and OSP is sort of getting out of the queue, there's still agencies across the state of all size that have significant vacancies and are having the same sort of recruiting challenge that we're having. The academy is one of several bottlenecks that agencies are giling with right now.
Okay, thank you. I feel like I have clarity. Counselor Chinoweth, do you have any additional or closing thoughts on that? Okay, great. Council president?
Since we're on the budget and the budget's about money, how many officers have we lost in the last three years for the SOs since they pay a lot more?
Who, to who? Just?
Yamhill County.
I couldn't hear you.
Have we lost to Yamhill County?
In three years?
Is that, that's about how long their new contract's been up, hasn't it?
Maybe two, but, but I think they've been actually longer. I think it's been prior to, prior to that. Two, I, I do believe we're gonna lose one more. It has nothing to do with compensation. Again, I say this clearly, our compensation is in line with our competitors. We're very, so it has nothing to do with that, so to your point. I, I just want to make that clear. It, it is not a compensation piece.
Understood. Uh, the second thing that you mentioned aggressive recruitment, is there anything? Understood. Second thing, you mentioned aggressive recruitment. Is there anything from a policy perspective that we as council could do to support you and Vicki and HR to make that recruitment more aggressive?
No, I think it's just, I don't think, I think your policies I've conveyed to our applicants, or even our lateral applicants, we have a very supportive council that we appreciate the support. We appreciate the support of the citizens. I don't think there's any from a policy perspective that needs to happen. Period. I think you have done a very good job of supporting your PD.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chenoweth.
Sorry. So that would lead me to the question, if we're competing up against other departments and the issue is not funding, and the issue is not the support that's being, that's coming from the city, what do we need to do to sweeten the pot to get laterals to come over here?
We already have a hiring bonus program. People are not, there are not a lot.
Culture issue?
I'm actually surprised we haven't had more lateral applicants come in. That's, we've actually, we have had lateral, oh, let me walk that back. We have had laterals that have applied. They've washed out in backgrounds. Okay? We're not just taking warm bodies. But to that end, I will again say, we have a lot, we are one of the few that have a hiring bonus program. I think we're aggressive that way. I think we have to market more aggressively from the PD, from the city side. But it is not a policy piece.
All right. And then, any other budget questions, conversation that people would like to have before we move forward with the public hearing, for questions for staff at this time? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So we'll now start to hear public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. Claudia, has anyone signed up in advance?
No.
Thank you. Has, is, is there anyone on the phone? I'm sorry, I'm out of order, but?
No.
No. Is there anyone in the gallery that would like to submit public testimony? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to submit public testimony? Not hearing any. I will now close the public hearing. And now we will go to a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 2023-25, a resolution adopting a planning fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting planning fee schedules at the time this fee schedule becomes effective. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding the resolution? Not hearing any. I will call on Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to give a presentation on the topic.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. So this is our annual process of bringing to you a fee schedule update based on two directions for the planning fee schedule. One is a fee schedule increase per a CPI index. So the cost of providing the service in terms of inflation this past year, we look at it from March to March. It's the CPI index for Portland, and this past year it was 5%. So we are bringing that to you. And then in 2018, you directed the department, after doing a fee study, to work towards full cost recovery for planning fees. Planning fees are for reviewing private development projects. And there was a consensus that private development should pay for the costs of private development and not the general taxpayer. And we were at a place in 2018 where the fees collector were paying for 12% of the cost of processing applications for private development, and the taxpayer was paying for 88%. We've been working on a gradual and incremental catch-up program for that, that involved an initial significant increase and then five years of 10%, plus the CPI. We are in the fourth, this will be the fourth year of that program because in 2020, we elected not to do any fee increases due to COVID. So the planning fee schedule you have in front of you has the 10% catch-up plus the 5% index for inflation. And then we also, as a city, made a decision in terms of some values related to these fees. So there was a decision that there were some permit fees that the city wanted to subsidize for two pieces. One, to support local businesses. So we have maintained a subsidized fee schedule for signed permits, and that those remain the same. So a signed permit, if a business wants to come in and apply for signage, it's $185. And then, and that's subsidized substantially. And then we also subsidize appeal fees and our downtown design review fees. Additionally, we provide a 50% reduction in planning permit fees for qualifying affordable housing projects, and those are projects that are deed restricting, deed restricted to serve households of 80% average median income or less. So I think, and then I also wanted to share with you that we are participating with the engineering team. So the engineering team has hired a consultant that's going to be looking at an engineering fee study similar to the one we did for planning five years ago. And we are participating with them on a sort of a review and evaluation of where we're at with our planning fees, just sort of a check-in for that to benchmark it again. And that will be happening over this next year.
Thank you. Does any counselor have questions of staff at this time?
Yes.
Counselor Chenoweth?
First process question, resolutions don't go to second reading. It's one-time vote. Okay. Second, you said we're doing Portland CPI. Why aren't we, is that the closest one?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Gary?
Yeah, the subsidy for those fees is, are we using that term? And is the subsidy, we set the rate but discounted it, and the subsidy is lost revenue on what we should be charging? Or is the subsidy offset revenue by charging more on a different fee?
No. So the former, so the fee study calculated fees for delivering that particular permit application review. And so we have not increased those fees to offset the value choice of decreasing the other fees in terms of full cost recovery. That essentially is a general fund subsidy into that program.
Sure. So it's a subsidy as lost revenue opportunity, not otherwise offset revenue from something else?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay. We'll now start to hear public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. Has anyone signed up in advance?
Not that I'm aware of. Heather?
No.
Would anyone in the gallery like to provide testimony? Would anyone on Zoom like to provide public testimony? Is there anyone on, is there, has somebody randomly joined on the phone? No. Okay. Thank you. Public testimony is concluded. Does staff have anything that they would like to add at this time for the record?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And does council have any additional questions? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. And we will have one more public hearing to consider Resolution Number 2326, a resolution adopting a building fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting building fee schedules on the effective date of this fee schedule. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding the resolution? I'd like to call on Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to give a presentation on the topic.
Yes, so thank you. This is a similar discussion to the planning fee schedule where it is a full cost recovery for reviewing building permits for private development. We have, as a city, been in a full cost recovery program for building permits for quite a while now, and that's a very common practice. Actually, and I should say it's a common practice for planning to be in full cost recovery permit fees as well. So the building fund operates like an enterprise fund. Fees collected in the building fund pay for the delivery of the program, and we keep it isolated in that regard. We noticed the fee schedule update to the Building Codes Division, which is the state division. They post it for the development community 45 days in advance so that the development community can comment on it, as well as the state. The state goes through a review of it, too. Just like the planning fee program, we're looking at the same CPI index from March to March, which was 5%. And so the increase that you see in front of you is 5%. There were a little few tweaks as we were working through it with the Building Codes Division over the last couple of weeks. So you did get an amended fee schedule posted into the packet on Monday. Those weren't substantial tweaks. It was really some process things that we were working through with the Building Codes Division.
Thank you. Does any counselor have questions for staff at this time? We'll now start to hear public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. Has anyone signed up in advance?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Does anyone in the gallery like to provide public testimony? Thank you. And I'm going to assume no one is still on the phone and that we don't have any additional staff comments or counselor questions at this time, and I will close the public hearing. We're now going to go to advice and information items, reports from councilors on committees and board assignments. Counselor Manke, would you start us this evening?
Well, this last month, I've had a very busy, or the last two weeks, I've been very busy for YCAP. We had our first board retreat, at least as far as I know, last Thursday. It was interesting, and we pretty much had Finance 101 and a few other agenda items. And it was generally well-received. Then I, we prepared, there was a budget meeting that was about a week before, and the Finance Committee approved the budget, and it was then presented today for the Finance Committee. In addition, we have opened up to anyone who is interested. It's a tripartite board, and we're looking for citizens that are interested in participating on the board. So if you do have an interest, it will be posted on the YCAP website and I believe on Facebook. So you might put in an application if you are sincerely interested. Let's see, trying to think what else. I think that's about all I've got.
Do you know what days of the week that's going to meet?
I'm sorry, say again?
Do you know what days of the week that that board will be meeting?
The board meets usually on the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Thank you.
Just before the city council meeting, I might add. Except for November, and I believe that's the second Tuesday. And on the, and in March, when they have spring break, I think it's going to be on the 19th, which is a week ahead, the Tuesday ahead. And it's six times a year.
Are you going to do MHC, too?
Oh, Affordable Housing. Okay, thank you. We are having an Affordable Housing Committee meeting tomorrow. Trying to think. I don't have a great deal to discuss on that one, I'm sorry. We're, I apologize. I'm not prepared for that one. Been focused on a subcommittee. We're going to miss you as chair. All right. So we're going to be talking about temporary camping, the temporary camping program. We're going to be talking about surplus land. There'll be a presentation at the meeting, which will be good. I think that's McCauley that's coming for that. And then the work group, small-scale incremental affordable housing projects. There'll be regular agency reports, and that's about the size of that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Counselor Payne on Zoom.
Sorry, touchscreen wasn't working. Landscape Review Committee met last week and approved one street tree removal. And then there was lengthy discussion about who takes care of trees after they're planted in a subdivision. That's all.
Thank you very much. I'm Counselor Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. MEVLC has not met. We hopefully will be meeting next month. Parkway Committee met, and it was about a week before signed die. So you can guess what the conversation revolved around. We're trying to get funding in for the program or for the different components. We've now broken up Section 2 of the bypass. Used to be just Part 2. Now it's Part 2A, B, and now C. As they break it into smaller pieces as ways to try to get the funding that they need for each of the components. I find that's easier to accomplish that way. Lots of discussion around McDougal Corner. There's going to be, you're going to start seeing some work, I think, in the next six months out there, as we rework the ways in which the roads are coming together there, or as they rework the ways, ODOT does.
Mostly public safety type of things, at least initially. They don't, hopefully they'll be changing their roads for the $4 million additional.
Right. Yeah, they're looking for $8 million total. Right now, they have four. And 2A is funded right away, purchased, should start seeing, they've just been dealing with contract negotiation with the employees. Hopefully, we'll see that start to go to building also in the spring and of 2024. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Thank you. MURAC tomorrow, and already reported on this month's EIAC meeting, so nothing to update.
Thank you very much. Council President?
Airport Commission meets on the 5th at 3:00. But with that said, we did get some money from Senator Wyden for Airport Master Plan of, to the tune of, I think, $450,000. We also have the airshow, and tickets are live online if you haven't bought your tickets to see the Blue Angels for the first time in eight years in the state of Oregon. So worth the, worth the expense. And visiting McMinnville, lots of things going on over there. They brought in some influencers to help promote Pride Month and shoot some short videos for that, as well as promote the farmer's market since that kicked off recently. Continuing to work with cycle Yamhill County on getting infrastructure in place and landowners to get our cycling, more destination development promotion done. And then continued work on EV station grants. So we should be seeing some EV stations here in the relative short term, I think. There'll be Level 2 chargers for that. And then continuing to partner with various summer events to promote and encourage visitation and spending and not just day trips, but long weekend trips. And then Fire District, we had a rural fireboard met tonight and voted 4-0 with one abstention to certify 226. And then we had the county commissioners certify their results on the 15th. Thank you to Commissioner in the back there, as well as Lindsay and Mary for working through that process. That was a long, long effort and something that, you know, the county didn't have to do, and very appreciative that they took that on and saw that through. And I'm glad the votes went the way they did. And after what we adopt here later tonight, that'll be the final, final, final thing for that. So yeah, look forward to that. And also on the 5th, the new fireboard will be sworn in over at the Fire Department at 4:00. So if you don't want to join us here for an Airport Commission meeting, you can join us over there for a Fire District meeting, July 5th.
Thank you. I have news you probably already know, but shared in this space anyways, unfortunate news. We, on one hand, we did not receive any money from the legislature this year. So that's the bad news. On the positive side of that, or the silver lining, the legislature is very aware of the city of McMinnville this year and very aware of our, of our needs in a way that they were not before. And then we are working to put together plans for going forward. And so that's, I think that's the highlight of that, and hopefully we'll be more successful in the short session. We also are still anticipating the visits from Director Bell from Oregon Housing and Community Services, who will be hosting with a number of our partners, including Housing Authority of Yamhill County and YCAP and the YCCO. And additionally, we are looking forward to, these are both meetings that needed to be rescheduled. We'll also be looking forward to hosting Khalilab Thornton, who's the Executive Director of Children's Institute, and similarly have some roundtable discussions coming, to be very specific, on McMinnville and McMinnville needs. So we're grateful for those opportunities. grateful for those opportunities to inform the state agencies about what we need at a city level to support not only our community, but our partners. So I'll let you know as those go out. And then just a reminder, if you're interested in joining the watershed tour, including you, Commissioner, that we have an invitation out for August 9th, and to please, please let Trina at Water &amp; Light know as soon as possible. And then we've just wrapped some strategic planning over at Water &amp; Light, and we are looking to, and we're in the midst of some larger facilities management planning. And I'm looking forward to getting things scheduled to start some of the process that came out of our joint work and having those updates come, coming here regularly, et cetera. We'll now go to department head reports, and I'll start with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of items to report. Earlier today, I sent to you a disclosure memorandum related to my wife Doris's election as a school board member. You also received under separate email a copy of the delegation memo that I sent to staff related to that appointment. The city recorder will be incorporating the disclosure memo as a part of tonight's packet as a matter of public record. Also, on behalf of Parks Director Susan Muir, who left to attend the first of our concert in the Park Series, she's listening to Big Bad Beat playing tonight. They're a cover band, and I think it's probably best that I just read the text. Holy cow, exclamation point, over 200, three exclamation points. That's the biggest crowd, I think, for the first concert of the season, exclamation point. Amaze balls, three exclamation points, thumbs up emoji, the dancing, three exclamation points, cutting loose, three exclamation points. So I think first concert of the park is a success. She also wanted to note that zucchini races are August 24th at 12:30 at the farmer's market, and she will follow up with Counselor Chenoweth later on because we know that was a highlight of your summer last year. And then I guess one last point of personal privilege, my wife Doris often watches city council meetings. I don't know if she's watching tonight, but if she is, happy anniversary, honey. I love you.
Oh, well, let's get this thing done and get you home. Congratulations. What anniversary?
24 years of marriage.
Congratulations. That's wonderful. Interim City Attorney Walt Gowell?
Mayor, I have nothing special to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Director Jennifer Cuellar?
Yes, I do have something to share this evening, Mayor and counselors. Since we last met, we have finally been able to move $20 million from a very low-interest-earning account to $10 million in a CD and $10 million in a money market, both of which earn interest rates higher than the pool where the majority of our dollars are in. So if our cash were to stay static relative today, we would see earn, relative earnings of over $800,000 in a year higher if we had not made this move. So I'm, I'm really pleased that we were able to do it. But that said, you know, we have cash, but we use it and put it to good work, and that will be happening. We've got a lot of expenditures coming online around the navigation center. There's a lot more activity, spending down American Rescue Plan Act dollars, so that'll also, you know, drop us down a little bit. And as well, out in the, the wastewater will begin some significant capital improvement projects over the coming year. So our cash levels will fall, so I can't assure us that we will get, you know, net in a, in a year that entire 800,000. But anyways, I'm just really, really pleased to have been able to make this move, so.
Wonderful. Great, great work. Thank you. Community Development Director Heather Richards?
Yes, I have a couple of things to report, but I want to start off by saying my, my walking buddy is back. My daughter is back with me for a couple of months, and we tend to walk the neighborhoods in McMinnville and sort of talk about development and planning and things of that nature. And a couple of nights ago, we walked through the Baker Creek North Lennar Development. When I do do these walks, I will often intercept people in their homes, knock on doors, introduce myself, and ask them some questions so I can understand how residents are enjoying or not enjoying the built environment. But I'd like to encourage people to do that. It's, it's always illuminating to me. And when we were walking through the Baker Creek North Development, we talked to three separate families. Two of them were, have just purchased their first home, and they had grown up here in McMinnville and had gone away as young adults and were coming back to raise their children. And they loved the development. They loved the fact that it was higher-density housing, and they loved the trail system and the parks associated with it as well. And then the third family I talked to was actually a grandma, a mother, who moved here to be closer to her daughter's family and grandchildren. So there's great stories out there. I think we often hear sort of these anecdotes of disconnect, of people who aren't connected to the community who are moving into these developments. And I encourage all of us who are involved in the process to just get out and walk and talk to people. It's, it's really valuable. And the trail system that's been developed back in that area is beautiful. It's a beautiful, open space, natural resource for us. So also wanted to let you know that we've been sort of doing some calculations, and I can't recall if I shared this with you previously on the 13th because I was still in kind of a COVID fog, so if I did, I apologize. But we're looking at our multifamily inventory that's in the pipeline as we try to bring more supply online to try and reduce housing costs for our community, especially for our workforce. So we have 200, 200 units of de-restricted affordable housing, serving households of 80% AMI or less that are in the pipeline, and will come online in terms of development here in the next two years. And then we have 264 units that are in the pipeline that will be market-rate housing as well. So that's important. The best way to counteract, counteract rising housing prices is housing supply because it is a commodity. And so being able to bring that to bear for this community will really make some impact. And those developments are all coming in under our new multifamily standards, so they have to meet our, our design standards, our open space standards, things of that nature as well. I also wanted to share with you that we received notice last week that, that we were successful in obtaining a $100,000 grant from Business Oregon to help us with our master planning for the Innovation Campus. It's important for us in two ways. It brings more money to bear so we can do a deeper dive into the master planning, but it also brings the state of Oregon as a stakeholder and partner into that discussion, too. And we also have another grant in the pipeline with them that we feel will be successful as well, which is for $60,000 for this, for the same project. And some of that money will be used for marketing the campus for business development opportunities. So glad to see that that's taking some traction and getting some resources to support it.
Thank you very much. Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, I just have to report on one item. The City Council, Councilor Galt, Walt, well, let me start this over again.
Fire Chief.
Can I start? Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to take this opportunity. We are working on, we're putting a draft IGA together for the city and the new McMinnville Fire District for the six months of services that we've all discussed through our process. We'll be taking that draft and presenting it to the new Fire District Board on the 5th of July for review and consideration for approval. And we'll have the council teed up for the July 11th meeting for that same IGA, given that it is approved the way that it's drafted currently, or with many modifications that we're working with. Count, why do I want to call you City Council, Walt? City Attorney, thank you. I don't, you got elected somewhere while I was gone. City Attorney Gowell has helped build that IGA, and we're working through that process.
Thank you. And then Director Pagano, did you have something to add? If not, I will be calling on you. Or is it, you just wanted to make sure I didn't miss you?
It's my job.
All right. Chief of Police?
It's my job not to miss you, I mean. I don't worry, I won't miss you. That's what I'm here to do.
Thank you, Mayor. Member of the council, just a few items of note. Two officers are under, not being offered jobs. We're hopeful they'll be online in a week, or at least offered within the week, and we should be bringing them on, I would imagine, towards the end of the month of July. I want to share a couple of things also on your calendars. I know Claudia mentioned she's already put it on there. August 1st, National Night Out, Discovery Park, food trucks. We're kind of trying to blow this up a little bit more, get a little bit more community interest. That's at 5. Fire Department will be out there with this. August 8th and 11th, this is something that I want to invite you to. We're going to have like an active shooter drill. We're going to be partnering with the Fire Department. It's going to be Fire District, YCSO, OSP. There'll be two dates. I'll get you the times, but it's something that I would encourage you to at least have an idea of how we train. You won't be in the mix with it, but obviously I'll be there to hold you back and make sure that you're not involved, and we don't want Counselor Gary fainting. So, yeah. I'm happy to report, the long session finished. I believe we had our OACP board meeting today. There was no bills that came through that were harmful to public safety, so that's a plus for us. I did want to share one last little bit. We talked about the effects of the park RV, the parking restructuring through rules. I'll just share some anecdotal information. I had our captains run some data about the calls for service. And we are with, with the sort of dispersal, we're up about 300%. So it is a, is a big deal when they are going into the neighborhood. So I will just preface that. So Officer Height and our officers are working extremely hard to keep up on this, so patience is, is asked of you all. But we are doing, having a heavy lift there. We're trying to stay on top of it, but it is certainly a call driver. I just wanted to share that little bit of tidbit of info with you. And I'm, I think next council meeting, I'll probably report on some kind of, some nuanced training that we're going to go on when we're going to bring this new recruit in. I think we're going to, I don't think, I know we're going to, this July person that we're going to start towards the end, we're going to push him. He'll be hired as a full-time officer, but we're going to model something similar to what a CSO program, and maybe get some data points back to show what kind of effect this officer will have with a little bit of training to get out there and hopefully takes, carve those calls for service that we talked about during the budget session. And I'm happy to report that the officer that we're going to bring on is excited to at least get this, and we're excited to get the data. Our union is understanding, and they are, they're not a CSO, they are a full-time officer, but we're going to get them some work for a couple of months prior to going to the academy in November. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Can you just repeat what you said, the 300% stat?
Yes, calls for service. RVs specifically, we have the ability to drill down about RV calls for service, abandoned RVs, or RVs that are ordinance violations. Say we had 50 in a, in a given, in a given month prior to that, we're probably up to 150 at least. So it is, it is a monumental increase, and we're trying to stay on top.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Recorder, Claudia Sisneros?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. IT Director Scott Burke?
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight, but I have to say happy 15th birthday to my son tomorrow because I got a text that he's watching me right now.
Good. Well done. It's family night. And Director Pagano, Public Works Director Pagano?
Thank you, Mayor. Drapkin, can you hear me okay?
We certainly can. Thank you.
Thanks. I just had a few items of good news to report. One is a follow-up from what Counselor Garvin had mentioned about receiving a $450,000 grant from FAA for our airport master plan. So I wanted to give a shout out to Willie Williamson for, our airport administrator, for working on that and getting that all figured out. Excited about that, and we'll be starting the master plan in the next couple of months. Secondly, we received almost a million-dollar grant from ODOT for a Safe Routes to School project in the vicinity of Sue Buell Elementary School and Patton Middle School. And that is thanks to the efforts of David Renshaw with support from Engineering, so shout out to them as well. And the IGA for that is on the consent agenda tonight. And finally, just wanted to mention, you may recall that in the past, we have been doing an IGA annually for our ODOT loan for the Newburgh Dundee Bypass Project. And we've simplified that project thanks to the help of some folks over at ODOT. And the new process is just a letter that goes to ODOT requesting to pay for the loan with our fund exchange dollars, and ODOT processes the loan payment and sends us a receipt. So we don't have to go through an IGA and take it to council and go through the whole process. So this year's payment is due on July 1st, and we've already gone through that process, and we should be receiving a receipt in the next few days. And that's it for Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the April 2023 Cash and Investment Report, and are there any questions? Thank you. We'll now move to our consent agenda. Would any counselor request to have any item removed from the consent agenda? Okay, I'm going to maybe do more than is necessary, but I'm going to call out Item A off the consent agenda. And while I don't have an actual conflict of interest, I, my business is a dues-paying member of the Willamette Valley Wineries Association, so I'm just going to remove myself from presiding over Item A and have, ask Council President to preside over Item A, and then I'll come back for Item B. Thank you.
Don't we adopt the consent agenda as amended before we move on to Item A? All right. Like to ask if any counselor would like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
See a move by Counselor Chenoweth and a second by Counselor Menke. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes four to zero, or five to zero, Counselor Payne?
Sorry, touchscreen's not working. Aye.
So five to zero. Now we will consider requests to permit a waiver of north ordinance from Christina Fuller of Fuller Events for an August 8th, 2023, for Willamette Valley Association Welcome Dinner. Any discussion? Like to entertain a motion for Item A of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A move by Counselor Menke, seconded by Counselor Geary. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes five to zero. Floor is yours, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. And while I recognize that might have been more than necessary, I do think it's a good practice when counselors need to recuse themselves from decision-making to leave the dais. And so happy to have an opportunity to do that myself. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-34, a resolution authorizing the approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement between the city of McMinnville and Oregon Department of Transportation for the Safe Routes to School Program, Sue Buell Elementary and Patton Middle School Pedestrian Safety Projects, Agreement Number SRTS 23-08. Could I have a motion to approve?
We already did that.
Oh, you did it?
Yes.
Right. Oh, sorry. Well, see, I got lost as soon as I walked away. Okay, we will now consider Resolution Number 2023-33, a resolution approving the final order of the county commission forming the McMinnville Fire District, which is attached in Exhibit 1, and consenting to the formation of a fire district incorporating the McMinnville city limits. I'd like to call on our Fire Chief, Rich Leifert, to present.
I'm going to defer to Walt since I mangled the last one so bad. No, actually, Mayor and Council, thank you for your attention. This is the final step in the approval of the, of the process from the city's perspective, and this resolution will be attached to the final board for the record of creating the new district.
Thank you. Any council discussion?
I just want to say, well done.
I just want to say, well done, and I'm glad we're finally to this point.
Thank you. I would then ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-33.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from Council President and a second from Counselor Menke. All those in favor, uh, act, uh, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The resolution has, uh, uh, passed unanimously. Um, we'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-35, a resolution extending the workers' compensation coverage to City of McMinnville volunteers. I'd like to call on Jennifer Quayar, our Finance Director, to present.
Um, good evening. So, this is an annual resolution that we do, um, discussing which of our volunteer groups will be in our workers' comp policy, and we do have a change this year relative how we've done this in the past. Um, this year, we're proposing that the safe workers' comp policy coverage be offered to the public safety employees, which are the police and fire department, and we have, um, gone out and looked at the market of alternative policies for, um, similar coverage, emergency accidental coverage for the other volunteer groups. And when we looked at the, um, at the options out there, we were able to secure, um, a policy that is slightly less costly. This isn't, this is not an expensive outlay for the city. It's, you know, two, $3,000 kind of thing in a year. Um, but it is a slightly lower cost. Ultimately, there is actually, um, more coverage for, um, folks to have access to should something catastrophic happen while volunteering with the City of McMinnville. Um, and the administrative burden for, um, managing it is much, much reduced. So that's why we're making the change, and the resolution is specifically about the safe coverage just for the public safety volunteers. We wanted to keep them in that more formal workers' comp-type policy, so.
Um, thank you. Any discussion at the council level? More questions? I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-35.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Menke, and a second from Counselor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-36, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive certain state shared revenues. And I'd like to again call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
Good evening. So this resolution and the one, um, coming up right behind it are associated with the statutorily required steps to, um, to access the state shared revenues that are available to the city on a formula basis. So this establishes that we have gone through all of the steps, that we've had our public hearings, um, that we have gone through the, um, process of, or we will be levying property tax for next year, and, um, it states the amount in that of $522,000 that was discussed, um, at the public hearing earlier this evening, so.
Thank you. Uh, any council discussion? Not hearing any, I'd ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-36.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth?
Second.
And a second from Counselor Menke. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. A motion pass, a resolution passes unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-37, a resolution certifying provision of municipal services by the City of McMinnville as required by ORS 221.760, and I'll again call on Jennifer Quayar, Finance Director, to present.
Um, so in this resolution, what we're doing is we are certifying that we provide, um, the requisite number of municipal services to be eligible for state shared revenue. Um, and this year, the list remains, um, the same. Next year, it will be different because, um, the fire protection will, will completely come off, but we will, we will still be eligible to, um, to get our state shared revenues even with this change.
Thank you. Any questions or council discussion? I would now ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-37.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Menke. And a second from Counselor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. The motion has, uh, the resolution has, uh, passed unanimously. We will now consider Resolution Number 2023-38, a resolution establishing a new Fire District Transition Fund in fiscal year 2023-24, and I'll call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
So, um, when, when a new fund is added to the city's, um, financial structure, we like to have a formal resolution authorizing that to move forward. And so we've been discussing this new fund throughout the budget process, but this resolution formalizes the fact that we will establish the Fire District Transition Fund, and it will be for the purposes of managing the, the first six months transition period, um, that is currently planned to have those staff on board still, and then when property tax starts flowing for the Fire District formally, well, the plan is to, you know, move those staff over. And then I anticipate that this fund will just exist as a, um, for a practical matter for a single year, but it did seem to make sense to be able to isolate it for transparency's sake with the transition and turning over, um, assets and tracking all of the expenses that the new Fire District will be reimbursing the city for.
Thank you. Uh, transparency might be the favorite word of the council, so any council discussion or questions? Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-38.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Council President Garvin, and a second from Counselor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-39, a resolution authorizing an interfund loan from the Wastewater Capital Fund to the General Fund for capital investments, and I'll call on Jennifer Quayar, our Finance Director, to present.
Um, great. So this evening, this, uh, resolution, as well as the one that follows it, are associated with internal borrowing actions. So whenever, um, we, we go out for any kind of debt, we ask the governing body to authorize us to move forward with that. And so what this resolution does is authorize to move forward with approximately $1.4 million in interfund loans from the Wastewater Capital Fund to the General Fund, um, to support a variety of capital replacement, um, projects and, you know, some vehicles, that sort of thing, that are listed out, um, in detail. Um, these are extended for a five-year term. Um, under state law, we're allowed to, um, do internal borrowing for up to 10 years, but five years seemed, um, right for many of these assets in terms of a, um, of a, uh, estimated useful life period. Um, we are extending them at 4.55 interest rate, and that is higher than we have discussed because in the last, I think, three weeks it's been, um, the, the local government investment pool has raised its rates, and so we wanted to keep on with, um, our practice of giving the Wastewater Capital Fund 0.5% a premium over the LGIP so that they're getting the benefit of, um, lending the General Fund these dollars. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions about the underlying authorities or any of the specific projects on the list.
Thank you. Uh, any council discussion or questions? Counselor Chenoweth?
Um, just on the surface, are these purchases ones we approved as part of the budgetary process?
Yes, they are all approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council questions or discussion? Not hearing any, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-39.
So moved.
A motion from Counselor Menke, and a, which one of you gentlemen got to it first?
Thank you.
Counsel President, uh, and Counselor Gary has seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. The motion, uh, the resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-40, a resolution authorizing an interfund loan from the Wastewater Capital Fund to the General Fund for fire and EMS operating costs, and I'll call on Jennifer Quayar, our Finance Director, to present.
Um, so this internal borrowing is separated because it's for operating purposes, and, um, the ORS is, the Oregon revised statutes have slightly different, um, standards for operating loans, so those must be repaid within a year. And in this case, our plan is to have it repaid within six months. So, um, this, this also is as described in the budget documents, and when, when we discuss it in the budget process, these are the same numbers there, so. Any questions or?
Any council discussion or questions? I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-40.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Gary, and a second from Council President Garvin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-41, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, making the appropriations, imposing the property taxes, and categorizing the property taxes. I'll call on Jennifer Quayar, our Finance Director, to present.
Um, so, good evening again. Um, this is the last item I have before you this evening, um, and it's regarding the budget, so this is the final step in setting ourselves up to be able to, um, uh, levy our property taxes next year, as well as have a budget in place to be able to begin spending, um, dollars as of July 1. So, in the, typically, there may be a few changes, additions, new information that we've gotten between the time that the Budget Committee approved the budget and, um, this meeting where you all adopt the budget. But because the timeframe was really tight, narrow this time, and also there just weren't, there wasn't a whole lot of new information that's come across the transom that you didn't already hear at the Budget Committee stage, there are no changes relative what was approved at Budget Committee and what's before you tonight, um, which includes the, the noteworthy fact that we will be under-leveying, um, at $1.50, so, so the levy is not $5.02 per thousand as typically we do with our full permanent rate. It is, I want to say it right, $3.52 per thousand of taxable value for next year.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Council President?
Oh.
No, you're, you're queuing up. Um, I would ask for a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2023-24 budget, make appropriations, and impose and categorize property taxes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Gary, and a second from Council President Garvin, uh, to adopt Resolution Number 2023-41, adopting the 2023-24 budget in the total amount of $156,382,633 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, to make appropriations in the amount of, um, 1,024,297,792, to impose and categorize the City of McMinnville's permanent property tax rate of $3.52 per 1,000 of assessed value for general operations, and $3,091,410 for debt service. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
And the resolution has passed, uh, with a vote of five in, uh, five in favor and one opposed. Uh, sorry, four, I, but, thank you. Four in favor and one opposed. Um, we will now consider Resolution Number 2023-25, a resolution adopting a planning fee schedule and repealing all provisions, uh, all previous resolutions, adopting planning fee schedules at the time this fee schedule becomes effective. I'd like to call on Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to present.
Yes, so Mayor and Councilors, I don't have anything in addition to add to the public hearing presentation outside to say that this is our annual update of permitting fees for our development community to review, uh, land use applications and building permits to support their projects.
Thank you. Uh, I will now, does there any council discussion or questions?
Yeah, I just, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
Thank you. Um, I just, I, the, these comments go to both of these, uh, 2023-25 and 2023-26. Um, I find this policy of, of full-cost recovery to be inconsistent with our other goals stated in the city, namely trying to keep property, uh, costs down. Um, I, I also find it inconsistent with, um, trying to build an economy based on local business folks. Um, and, and I've made this argument multiple times, so I won't go into the weeds on why I find it inconsistent on both points. Um, and so I will be voting in opposition, um, to the full cost, to these, because of the full-cost recovery portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chenoweth. Any additional, um, conversation or comments or questions? Not hearing any, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-25.
So moved.
Oh.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Menke, and a second from Counselor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, signify by saying nay?
Nay.
The resolution has passed, uh, the vote of four in favor and one opposed, and we will now consider our final resolution for the evening, Number 2023-26, a resolution adopting a building fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting building fee schedules on the effective date of this fee schedule, and I will again call on Heather Richards, Community Development Director, to present.
So I don't have anything to add for this resolution. This would be for the, particularly for the building fee schedule.
Thank you. Any council discussion or questions? Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-26.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Gary?
Second.
And a second from Counselor Menke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
And the resolution has passed with four in favor and one opposed, and I will now adjourn this meeting at 8:28 PM.